We are here tonight so that we can hear questions and comments. The town hall meeting, which was called by unit owners. And first Marvin would like to say a few words on how we got here and open up the floor for questions and comments. Okay, thanks.
What a great crowd. Thanks for coming down. For those who don't know me...
It's too loud Marvin, too much feedback.
Is that better? Okay. For those who don't know me, my name is Marvin Tally. I live in the Zerth building. I've been a unit owner since 2004. I was a unit owner before I got on the board. I'm a unit owner while I'm on the board, and I'll still be unit owner when my sentence, I mean my term, is up. I want to start at the beginning, so forgive me if I'm repeating some of the things you already know. And forgive my chipmunk look, I just had some surgery this morning. Any condo board of directors, or even a business board of directors for that matter, needs accurate and reliable information, financial information, in order to make decisions. When this board took over in January, we knew immediately that the available numbers were incomplete and unreliable. We simply could not make the important decisions based on those numbers. Now, it's management's job to maintain our books. And we determined that the existing self-management system was not able to meet the association's needs. So the highest priority for the board was to hire a competent management team. That process took a couple of months, and AMG became our management company in April. One of AMG's most important jobs was to go over the association's books and report to the board. That was a very challenging effort, and they did so, and they reported to the board in June. And the 2010 and 2011 reports are available at the office. AMG also closely examined the entire village. The directors then had the facts and figures needed to make the important decisions. We knew the precise figures as far as our operating deficit was concerned, and we knew the projects that were critical and important for the village to undertake. And much of that, virtually all of that information is contained in the package that we mailed to you last Friday. Hopefully you've received them, and hopefully you've read them. Now, the association has to accomplish two things right now. We have to fund the 2012 operating deficit, and we have to figure out a way to pay for all the projects that have to get done. The vast majority of the projects on that list that you got are mandatory. They are code legal requirements. Of course, the association can choose not to do any of those things. And the inevitable result of not doing those things is bankruptcy. Now bankruptcy would include, basically the board of directors being wiped out, and a receiver put in its place to take over from the board of directors. Without the board of directors, there is no sales and lease committee to screen rental applications. It would truly be, from that point on, a free-for-all. Property values would drop like a stone. Some of you may be familiar with the Spanish Moss condo across Inverry Boulevard. They went bankrupt, and now there are units on the market that cannot be sold for $10,000. Bankruptcy would mean the closure of the clubhouse and the pool. So all the amenities that make International Village special, they would be gone. Bankruptcy would probably eliminate all security, so we would no longer have a gated community, unfettered access to anybody who wants to come in. Lawn service, groundskeeping, would be eliminated or severely reduced. And there would be no renovations to any of the six remaining buildings that have yet to be renovated. In short, the village as we know it would be gone. It would just be 11 three-story apartment buildings that are open to almost anybody. This is not what I bought into when I bought my unit at International Village. And this is where we're at right now. And an open invitation to everybody here, after you get your questions answered and you hear the facts and figures that we're going to be going over, if any of you have a viable alternative to fund the deficit and get the projects financed that we need to do, please let us know an alternative. Because I became a senior this year, and I'm on a fixed income. And this special assessment hurts like hell. So I think some of you are in the same boat. But when I look at the alternative, it's, I don't know what else to do. So that's kind of how we got to where we are. I'll hand this over to Jason. Thanks a lot.
Okay, why don't we open up the floor for questions?
Hi, my name is Marcy Tally. I'd like to know how you came about with the figures on the assessment for each apartment. You know, like the J apartment and the T apartment, there's only a difference of, say, $30. How did you come about?
The condo docs are very specific on how, on each unit and the percentage. So it's just strictly taken right out of the condo docs, just like your maintenance. It's whatever the...
I know the size of the apartments.
Yes.
So I assume you went by the size of the apartment.
We go by what the docs say and what your maintenance is. Because your maintenance payments was dictated by your percentage in those docs. So it's the same percentage.
No, I checked it out. And the J apartment is being assessed too much. I think you need to go back and check that.
We can certainly go back and look to see how that breaks out. It was followed by the docs, but we can go back to the docs if that's your question.
I'd like to see that. Because even on the three years, even on the three years, you're talking about $5 difference a month between a J and a T. Does not make sense.
Okay, but you realize that when you're spreading it over the total amount of the assessment, are you looking at the total amount?
Yeah, I'm talking about the three-year...
Yeah, look at the total assessment on the three-year. You have to look at the total of that particular unit. Those two units that you're talking about.
Sure.
So that's $2,500. Hey, it's a $200 difference. When you divide that by 36 months, that's why you're seeing a $5 difference. Yes.
Look, folks. If we look at the condo docs, and I'll give you an example. Let's take the most common unit here in the project in Ivy. We're looking at a one-bedroom large. We have 349 of those units. And they represent 36.331% of the total. And that's what we work on, Marcy. It's the percentage of the typical type of unit you own. So if you own... Where did my figures go? For example, what's your unit number?
If you go down to number eight, it's a 3J.
Right. If I go to number eight, your responsibility is 10.573% of the total assessment. And that's how we came up with the figure. It is no different than the last assessment, and no difference in what your monthly maintenance payments are. It's based on the percentage of 100%.
Charlie, just look at number nine.
Yes, I will.
Which is a T apartment?
Number nine would be, number nine is a two-bedroom plus a den.
Which is a T apartment?
Which represents 5.332% of the number of units there are in the village. We have 31 of the 832. And that's how we calculate your payment. It is based on the percentage, not the square footage. It has been a misnomer that it's not based on the size of your unit, but on the type of unit you own. Okay, Marcy? From day one.
And it has nothing to do with the fact that it's at the end of the...
No, nothing. It has to do with the number of units based on 832. So of the 832 units in the village, your unit represents 10.573%, and that's how you're assessed. So for every $100, you are charged $10.57 per $100. It's very basic math. Okay? Does that answer your question now, Marcy? Good. Yes, your question?
Yeah, I have an apartment that's not even listed here.
Go ahead, sir.
You got two, two stories, four bedrooms. I'm in a three-bedroom apartment, G, one P.
Okay. Sir, I will tell you right now that you do not own a three-bedroom apartment. You own a two-bedroom plus a den.
I own a three-bedroom apartment. 26 years.
The P apartment.
P apartment is 26 years there.
Okay, in our docs, in our docs, in our documentation, from day one, from day one, all units have been significantly been tagged as follows. And let me read you what our docs say. Efficiencies, 33. Studios, 32. One-bedroom small, 62. One-bedroom large, 349. One-bedroom split, 36. Two-bedroom split, 134. Two-bedroom rear, 65. Two-bedroom five, 66. Two-bedroom plus a den, 31. Cabanas, eight. Four-bedroom, five. Four-bedroom large, 10. And joint apartment, one. That is from day one.
Where is a listing for a three-bedroom?
There is no listing for a three-bedroom.
I live in a three-bedroom.
I understand, sir. But have you been an owner from day one?
26 years.
All right. So sometime between the time that unit was built until you owned it, it was enclosed as a third bedroom?
No.
Okay? I'm telling you right now, I'm only talking to you about our docs. Go back to your docs, sit down just for a second. Dan, just sit down for a second. I'm just going from our docs, okay? Our docs are very specific. Can you lower that, Elwood, please? Anybody can clarify that? Go ahead now.
Okay. There are five such apartments in the village.
Say again.
Five such apartments in the village. I own one also in the same way as this gentleman. Why the docs say four bedrooms, I don't know. We have three bedrooms, three bathrooms, and that's the size of our apartment. Three legitimate bedrooms with closets, so it's not two bedrooms and a den. And we are unique in that there are only five. But the docs say that somewhere along the line, it's a misnomer.
Okay.
But okay.
Yeah. I'm just saying what the docs say, okay? And this is basically, three-bedroom, four-bedroom. This is not the issue tonight. All right? Whether you own a three-bedroom, a four-bedroom, or efficiency, or a cabana, this is not what we came and gathered here tonight. Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, it's, like you said, this is not why we came here tonight. The point is, we all have an assessment, and the assessment has to be paid now. But a lot of people, we want to know what the percentage of people in this community that are not going to be able to afford to pay that assessment, how it's going to affect if you're going to have to pay it.
Dan, you better understand that this is, this whole process that we came here tonight with this board has been a very, very difficult journey. Very difficult journey. We know one thing. The figures don't align. The figures show us to be in deficit of $2,012, $813,000. That's the reality. And how do we, how do we do this with a delinquency of 19%? 19% delinquencies? The number is 157 units? 157 of our units, owners, are not paying us. And because we live in a condominium society, the sad truth is, the sad truth and the hurtful truth is that all of us that can't pay must pay for those that can't pay. That's the bottom, bottom, sad, sad reality. And if we don't do that, as Marvin has pointed out, at the end of this month, at the end of this month, we no longer have any money to run this village. Zero. Not a cent. We have used all collections. We have used all of our insurance fund to operate this village. And this administration has tried very hard to bring us to the end of the year, but we could not, no matter what we did. And let me just read you some very interesting facts so that you folks know what this administration and this new management company headed by Jason, our property manager, has been able to do. We have saved $22,000 in our communications with AT&amp;T by renegotiating a contract. The fire alarm systems in each building need to be changed. And because of Jason's hard work and AMG's hard work with negotiating with different... Please put your hand down. Thank you. Please put your hand down, and we'll call you up on it. We have been able, because of vendors, been able to negotiate a $53,300,000 per building, I'm sorry, $53,300 total savings this year on just the fire alarms. The Verizon Wireless have been negotiated, and we've been able to save $4,800 per year. Payroll has been reduced this year by $62,000. Insurance has been reduced by $124,000. Landscape by $15,800. Elevator monitoring by $4,920. The water conservation, as you all know, we've already finished one building, and we're continuing our thing. We anticipate, based on that one building that we did, we will save $100,000 in water bill this year. We will bring our water bill from $600,000 to $500,000. And office supplies and maintenance supplies, small as it seems, but we saving $4,500 bucks. So we have done what we need to do. The reality is, let me give you some figures that anyone can come into the office and anticipate. I'm sorry, I... The deficit for 2000, yes, I see that. The deficit, the deficit for 2010 That's in 2010. We didn't know that. This was hidden from us. In 2011, our deficit was $959,185. Again, we did not know this. This was hidden from us. In 2012, our deficit will be reduced to $813,000. And still, with all the savings, with all the collections we did, we still are behind. And the only people that can pay for this is us. This is a hurtful, hurtful increase in assessment. None of us on this board, none of the selected members of this board that you chose, wanted this. But we needed to make the hard decision. And as hurtful and as uncomfortable, I do not want to fall on what the alternative is. And the alternative, as Marvin said, is very simple. Bankruptcy, the state comes in, trustee is appointed. And trust me, we don't want that. I know one thing. As a unit owner, and not talking about the president, as the president of this association, nor as an elected director of the board, but as a unit owner, I own units in this village, and this assessment is going to cost me $10,000 out of my pocket. This was a tough decision. However, I'm prepared, as a unit owner and as investor, to invest the $10,000 that's going to protect my investment of over $300,000. If I have to invest 10 to protect my $300,000, to protect my standard of life and to protect my real estate value, darn, I'm going to do that. And I hope and I pray that most of you will also stand behind us and also protect your standard of life and your real estate value. Because when we open that gate and anyone can flood in, trust me, your unit is going to be worthless or almost there. I own two, and possibly I've already made an offer on a third that's been accepted. Yes, ma'am, please stand up.
Okay, here's my question to all of you, as well as to you. If that is the case, how serious the situation is, we, each one of us, are going to have to pay for this out of our own money. So I tell you guys that you don't have to accept that. The way it should be done over here is that each one of you that is an owner of each of the units to vote in favor or against. And then, and only then, if there is a majority of voters of us to accept this kind of deal, then, okay. But I don't think it's fair that on something like this, that I'm going to end up paying almost $4,000 a month just for, for, particularly me, I don't know about others. Particularly, just some maintenance, okay? I don't think that the board is enough of people to take the responsibility over my name, my credit.
It is the board's responsibility.
My, my, my money. I don't think that they have the right to do that. So if you guys are in favor of this, you can actually sign this guy out of here. You have the right to do that. You can...
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Wait. Excuse me.
The idea is that each one of us will have a vote about this and for us to vote in favor or against. Ask them for us to act.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to answer to what you're saying, and I appreciate your comment. The way condo laws work is the board of directors is elected by the residents, okay? The board of directors has a fiduciary responsibility, a financial responsibility, to the unit owners, to the residents, to the community. With that, they do have the responsibility, and they do have the authority to place a special assessment when necessary. This is Florida statutes.
I know.
Okay. So the board has the absolute authority to impose a special assessment if it's deemed necessary by the financials. And they have to do it by a vote amongst themselves, okay? You voted for the directors, and the directors have that authority to vote for a special assessment. And ladies and gentlemen, I can tell you, I've only been here since April. This board did not realize just how serious... I don't think anybody in the community realizes, just realize just how serious your financial situation is. Because, and I'm sorry that I have to be the one to say it. It pains me to say this. This is not fun, standing here in front of people to discuss this type of a situation. But the reality is, the money has to come in, or the lights will go off. The water will be shut off. It's a very scary feeling. And the reason why the board is operating this way and making decisions, no decisions have been made yet. The board meeting is, I think, on Saturday?
The 15th.
The 15th? Because they need to save your place where you live.
Why should we continue giving money when they haven't managed the money all these years?
Well, and that's a very good question. And if I was sitting there, I'd say the same thing. My answer is simply, they didn't do it.
No one did.
No one here did it. You're absolutely right. Well, it's, this isn't, okay. What I'm hoping, it's not, you're not bailing... Ladies and gentlemen, you're not bailing the board out of anything. You're bailing yourselves out so that your water doesn't get shut off. I mean, that's the reality of what's happening.
I have a question to ask you. Why wasn't an audit taken so that they would know? In any business, they know where they stand. How come they didn't know that?
I can tell you that we have the audits now. The audits are, everyone, I think, you see, I know they receive the orders.
It's too late now. Should have been done years ago. So...
Yes, and I can't speak to that. I wasn't here years ago, and this board wasn't here years ago. So I can't answer that. What we need... I'm sorry, one at a time, one at a time.
If this money wasn't spent well, will we go after those people? People who mismanaged the fund? Will we go after them? How do we get this money back?
Okay. You're asking a question that is a very difficult question to answer. Things that, it is, it is. Because what happens is, anything, anything that's done in the past, anything that's done in the past by elected boards...
I don't know any institution, any organization where you just spend money and has no control at all. Nobody has the control to just spend money. If you take the money so I can, so nothing I can do. You assess again, you assess again. It's a continuous fee. Come on.
Well, you have, I'll tell you right now, you have in your hands where exactly the money is going. And that's where it's going. We don't have the money. And the money that is being assessed in part one is going so that you can keep yourselves away from bankruptcy. In part two... In part two- Of course there, listen, there should be accountability all across the board. Everybody should be accountable for their actions, this board is being held accountable for their actions. They have to do what they have to do.
Ask them who are sitting here.
You're, 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 you're- Well, you're, listen, you're absolutely correct, I cannot speak about the past, I can't, I, I- Well, if you look, it's very simple, I can, I can answer that question very simply. When you, you have a list there of where that money is being spent. You have a list. If you don't see, if you don't see that stuff being done, then you know the money didn't go where it was supposed to, and that is not legal. So I'm telling you now that what you see in that project list- No, you see the list, so you'll see if it's done. You'll, you, you have the list, if the fire alarms aren't done, you're going to know. If the speed hums aren't done, you're going to know. If the building isn't renovated, you're going to know. Everything on that list you can, you can account for, at least the way we've done it. I can't talk about what happened in the past because I didn't do it, I wasn't here. I can tell you that that list that you have in your hands, you can quantify, you can qualify it because you're going to see whether the work is done, or you're going to see whether the work is not done, and you'll know. And then you can take action if it's not done.
It's already done, why do we do that?
Right now, we have an unfortunate situation where we need to fund the operation, and then we have these, uh, the list that you see there, we have things that have to be done in the village. Okay, that's, that's a good, that's a very good question, I want to answer that. As anything that you do, for example, your forty-year certification, that's on that list. The building code requires that, that, that all your buildings receive a certification after forty years. Or they shut you down. It happens, you've heard of it happening all over Miami. Okay. We have, we have to make projections on what these things will cost. We have to make projections based on, uh, professionals that come out and do walkthroughs to the property. We have inspectors right now going through every building, you may have seen them going up on the roof, going here, going there, so that they can make their assessments to us. For example, balconies, you have a figure next to balconies, that's structural, that's mandatory, must be done. Those figures are given by the professionals, okay? Is it possible that something can happen and you'd need more money? There's always that possibility.
Do you see those figures are given by professionals, what professionals exactly are these people?
The, the certified by the state of Florida for structural engineering.
Okay, so then these are projected, did you get actual photos?
No, we got actual, we got, we got, we got, okay, when it comes to, say, the structural, uh, the, you, you, we have to do the work now, and we have the structural engineer who gives us how many linear feet he believes we need to do, and, and the high price, low price, medium price, and then we sit down with the contractor and look at high price, low price, medium price, and we come up with a figure.
What is the process of selecting these contractors?
Oh, okay, oh, yes, three, yes. When the work is done, if you, uh, and the third, the third, uh, Monday of every month, or, uh, if there's a special board meeting, they're always posted two days in advance, and everybody is welcome to come to a board meeting. These things are placed on an agenda, which you, if you looked at your notices, for example, I mean, we, the pool, for example. The pool, it was on the agenda for vote. If you came to the board meeting, you would see that we presented three, sometimes four bids in some cases, and then we recommend the one that we believe, uh, is either the lowest or the best, or however, a lot of factors go in. Sometimes it's the medium bid that's better because you actually get more, better product, longer life, better warranties or what have you.
Jason, excuse me, we go through the RFP's, uh, uh, process, okay, explain RFP.
Okay, well, we, we have, it's a, it's a, it's a request that you send out, you put a very specific, uh, specifications so that you get like bids. So you don't have someone bidding on, uh, using apples and someone using oranges to build something. So we use those, uh, requests for proposals. They all bid on the same exact material, on the same exact work, everything's the same. And you take that, those bids, and they're all apples-to-apple bids, so that we're able to figure that out. Okay, I, I heard from you in the beginning, just, I, I just want to get to some people, I'm sorry, I will get to you, I will get to you, yes.
Um, if we pay for the nineteen percent that's not paying, so if we pay our assessment in four years, those nineteen percent still aren't going to pay.
Okay, okay. This is, let me, let me explain to you what happens. And it's very important for everybody to understand what I'm about to say. Just because there has to be provisions made to cover for that nineteen percent does not mean those nineteen percent are not responsible and are not going to be billed, and are not going to collections, and are not going to the attorney, and are not going to be foreclosed on. They are responsible, and they will be held responsible. This, this is a responsibility of owning a property, you have to pay what you have to pay, just like a mortgage. So, I don't want anybody in this room to think that just because the people who are paying have to make up right now for the people, because we need the money now. So that's the reason why this happens. But it doesn't mean that we don't go to collect, and it doesn't-
How long it will take for the village to foreclose a unit? And how long does it take? So if people are not paying, how long will they call?
Foreclosure-
When the unit together, then come.
Okay.
We can substitute this, uh, income we're not having from the audience.
Okay. After the unit goes into delinquency, goes to the attorney. The attorney files a lien. It takes approximately two months? Thirty to sixty days, one to two months for us to foreclose. When we foreclose, then, the only, the alternative, what we would have to do is rent out the unit so that the income can come into the association. Since we've been here, I think we've had four or five, five in a few months. Well, I mean, that was after we just, we came in, I got here, uh, uh, April sixteenth.
Takes two months.
And- It ta- okay, so April sixteenth I got here, we had to first figure out some stuff. We, we couldn't just come in and then just start fore, we had to figure out what's happening. We had to look at the financials, we had to find out delinquencies, and we actually were able to, since then, get five, we said, was it five, five, four, five already foreclosed with, uh, I don't know how many liens, a lot of liens went out. The attorney sent out a lot of liens, which we'll have a report hopefully within the next week, so we know how many liens went out. And liens take, as I said, thirty to sixty days, and then we can start renting out.
The apartment across from mine has been on foreclosure for four or five years. And there's still people living there. About four or five years now.
Say that one more time? Foreclosure from the bank or foreclosure from us, it's different. Because what, this is what happens with, do you need me to talk louder? I'm sorry? Okay. With us, when we foreclose on a unit, we're able to rent it right away. When we rent it, the bank still holds the note, if it, obviously, if there's a mortgage. So whether we put a lien on it or not, we can rent it, but then if the bank decides to foreclose on it, we have to walk away, it's not ours anymore, it's the bank's. Then, but then the bank is responsible for paying the maintenance. I, I, I'm sorry, I just, I have like, five people here have been trying to talk. Absolutely, and you'll be, you'll be right after this gentleman, absolutely, yes.
Jason. I'm wondering what your objection is to LM funding, buying our receivables so we can get paid right now, right now?
Okay, LM funding, the way they work is, we have, we have everything with the attorney. The attorney's already foreclosing. They're already putting the foreclosure notices. The way, the way the company that you're talking about works is, they will give you a percentage of it, and then you can't do anything. You can't do anything with any of those units at all, until-
They, they are buying the debt.
But you, but wait, I didn't finish. Let me tell you how much all of our receivables we would collect, based on the figures I discussed with them, because I did call them. And then you'll understand why. From, I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, because you were here before me, from November until, I think it was March or April, we have collected three hundred and twenty thousand or something like that?
Twenty-five.
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand from, from collections. If they were to buy all of our receivables from us, all of them, upfront money, we'd get two hundred thousand, I think a little less, one ninety-something. And then we can never do anything with any of it, with any of them. So, they, and, and there's no time limit for them, because I asked all these questions. I said to the gentleman I was on the phone with, okay, if we give you these, if we give these to you, how do I know you're not going to finish with this within a four or five-month period? He said, well, there's nothing in writing about it, but I need to because I'm paying out money. But there's nothing in writing, they could take a year, they could take a very long time, when we are able to collect what we're collecting in a shorter period of time. You understand, you follow what I'm saying? If we collected three, and it was not all of our receivables, we're talking about, I don't, I don't know how many units it was, but we collected three hundred thousand on less than half the amount that he's going to buy.
Well, that does not match the conversation that I had, so it's interesting, I'm going to have to hear it, because I'm going to talk to him about it.
Yes, and you, I welcome you to come to my office, we can talk on the, on the conference together.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know how he would tell you anything else, you don't know how much the receivables are.
It doesn't matter, what he said to me is they would pay up to a year. Or one percent of the value of the home.
Yeah.
And what you're telling me is-
But they pay, they paid upfronts.
Upfronts.
And that's it, and then you get nothing until-
Till what?
Till he, till, if they collect or if they don't collect. And we don't have a guarantee of what they're going to collect, when we have a track record of our current collections. We don't have a track record with them.
No, just money.
Yeah, but that, that amount of money, you could be making, you may make a lot more by keep, by keeping it with the attorneys that already sent out, already sent out these notices. And it's in the middle of the process, you have to take everything away from what we have when it's already in process.
I'm getting the big picture.
I mean, we can sit down and, and go over it with, in, in, in a conference call with them if you want, okay? No, hold on one second, I, I promise you, yes.
No, no, I didn't have a question at this time, I was just commenting that the disorder-
Oh, okay, thank you, okay, yes.
Mr. Noel, please sit down, you've already, we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you, Mr. Noel.
I'll, I'll come back to you, I just need to get some people, some other people who are on the phone.
There are other people in the room we want to hear to also, okay?
Yes.
With all due respect, please. Sit down, please.
Sit down.
Okay.
Sit down, Mr. Noel. I'm asking you nicely.
Okay, shh, okay, let's go, okay, yes.
You have a very tough job, and two years ago, you weren't part of this.
Give him the mic, but you can't hear him.
Everybody thinks you should have a mic.
I said that you have a very tough job, and two years ago, you weren't part of this, but I was here. And as a matter of fact, I find a lot of new faces tonight that should have been here when we had meetings two years ago. The first thing I can tell you is a gentleman called Michael Schenkel, who died, God rest his soul, he stood up in a meeting against a board that was telling us we were loaded with money, loaded with money. Michael Schenkel said, "We're at least short five hundred grand." I stood up and I said, "Well, the budget you gave me, which is approximate, because nobody had the figures, says that we have three million three in expenses and two million seven in revenue." So I didn't have to be a rocket scientist to knew, to know that I was at least six hundred, that we were six hundred thousand dollars short two years ago. Mark Richmond, who bothered playing with the figures, for, he was our treasurer, he said, "Not six hundred, it's eight hundred." Now all of a sudden, we're short eight hundred, that's two years ago. You know, and seems to me, a lot of people here have a big surprise, you know? If they had been at that meeting, maybe they would expect a special assessment. I don't like special assessments, costing me money, okay? And as a matter of fact, I, I looked at this special assessment, and I really looked at it to see if we could maybe reduce it a little bit and all this. But I don't want this community to go bankrupt. We have to pay the bloody thing, we could cry about it all night, it's not fun for anybody. But I say that if you people, all of you, were here two years ago, if you were as involved as I was in trying to make my two cents in the discussion, and trying to fight a board that was hiding stuff from us, the board that was telling us we were multi-millionaires, I mean, Jason, don't be surprised, thank you.
Thank you, yes, please.
Twice, you said earlier, "We could not see this thing coming." "The board could not see this thing coming." And twice you said the reason for that was because the figures were hidden from us. Now I am a low-income unit owner, I can't afford this assessment, and I want to know who did this to me. It's time to name names and then get that, get that out to the public.
Okay, first, I, I just want to correct one thing, I never, I never used the term, uh, figures being hidden.
Yes, you did.
It wasn't, it wasn't meaning said.
Yes, you did.
Okay. I, I, okay. Okay, I apologize if I used the word hidden, okay, because I wasn't here, okay? What, when you're asking the question to name names of people, I mean, this is, this is something that happened in the past. Uh, we'd have to, you'd have to, we'd have to look at the, uh, at the past numbers, and we, you, we'd have to seek legal, legal opinion and legal advice. This is not something that, uh, a current board or a management company can go into. We have, we have to get an attorney to go into looking at that. If this is the direction that, uh, is placed for us to take, if we are directed to get an attorney to look into things and to get this, then this is what we will do. But to stand here and give you an answer and name names, there's no way I can do that, because I don't know.
What's the difference? What's the point?
And what's the point, which is what people are saying, okay? And what, and what would you gain from it?
Nothing.
There's really nothing to gain. There's nothing to gain, to, by knowing it. Yes, maybe you would gain knowledge and, and have satisfaction knowing, but it, it, you don't gain anything from it, my, uh, from a community standpoint or from a monetary standpoint. Only thing it would do is cost you money with attorneys.
The thing that's making everybody crazy is, why do we need a million dollars by January? By January, because it says in the letter, it's just, it's been covered up until, I don't know- By January, because it says in the letter, it's, it's been covered up until, I don't know, like, I'd say October fifteenth, by the money we had, and then that money's gone, and now we gotta come finish the year, it's the way it's, I'm reading it, but if that's the case, then you only need a hundred and seventy-one thousand to finish the year, not a million.
Right, but we're, but it's going through till, uh, we, we have, we have to cover through until Jan, Jan, through January, first of all, because that's not when it continues.
That's not eight hundred thousand dollars.
Um, but...
Three thousand dollars a day, we're upside down.
Can you hear him? He needs a mic, can you hear him?
We're upside down, three thousand dollars a day, until approximately October fifteenth, based on what you guys are telling me, forty-five days from, last time I heard it. So that means between October fifteenth and January, we need a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, not eight hundred thousand dollars. So why are you collecting eight hundred thousand dollars in a four-month period? Because that's what people are freaking out about, it's the amount of money, it's such a large amount of money in such a short space of time. We're not here responding to...
Okay, so, let me answer that for you, okay? You're absolutely right, uh, we need to basically fund our operating for October, November, December, and January. However, the state requires that you cannot run a deficit budget for the end of the year, you must refund that amount. We've gotten a couple of surprises in the last few days that are incredibly, uh, money-consuming. Friday, we got news that the Nottingham roof is condemned and needs to be replaced at a cost of approximately two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have been informed today that the air conditioning units here in the large card room need to be replaced. These are all little surprises that have come our way, that normally would have come out of the two thousand and twelve budget. And that's the reason why we're raising that kind of money, is to take care of items that are responsible for the two thousand and twelve, and to make us consistent with what state statute requires, okay? Hold on.
Charlie.
Yes, sir.
Why are you feeding around the bush? All of that is in the past, and right now is, what do we got to do?
Well, I just said what we have to do. We have to raise eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to cover an eight, two thousand and twelve.
Twenty minutes was spent on her saying she's paying five dollars more for her apartment. What the hell does that mean to us?
This is not what we're talking about.
You spent twenty minutes on that?
Look, we're eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars deficit until the end of the year, that's the bottom line. We have roofs to repair, air conditionings to do, and operating. We have, do not, no longer have one dime in our insurance fund to continue funding our monthly deficits, that's the bottom line. We miss you, Noel.
How do we save, do you save sixty-two thousand dollars for ancillars? I remember you...
On, on what, I'm sorry?
Ancillars, in wages.
Give him the mic.
Okay, uh, what he actually said is, "How do we save sixty-two thousand..."
I'm not finished yet.
Excuse me, I'm repeating what he's asking.
I'm not finished yet.
Hold on, one question at a time.
No, 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 that's, that's the second one, I'm waiting. Okay. I remember that we had a wage increase with the last board.
Don't let him monopolize the news.
Yeah. My question is, how, uh, we save sixty-two thousand dollars in wages? I remember with the last board, we had a wage increase for the employees, and also we hired more people, and I was fighting for the highway, which Elwood is one of them. We hired a supervisor of security, that I was, I was against, so how do we save this money?
Okay. When I look, when, when we look at what we're saving, it's what we're saving compared to the last year, and what we're saving to this year, from last year. How do we save it? Because through this management company, we are able to get much lower rates when it comes to workers' comp, we're able to get much lower rates when it comes to insurances. So, when you, when you have bulk, you're able to do that, you're able to save. We have, um...
Less employees.
We definitely have less employees, because before you had more security, because I saw more security on the payroll last year.
More office staff.
Um, there was, there was definitely more office staff, because we have, we, we're missing, uh, one now. Um, in maintenance, we, we have, we have less, because we, there's less money on the, on the books right now, that we're paying less payroll. So whatever happened last year, with whatever savings we're able to do this year, the amount comes to sixty-two thousand.
Okay, Jason?
And that's so far, that's just, that's just, now next year, you'll probably see even an increase to that, into that savings, yes? Yes?
Can you hear him?
On cameras.
Why do we need to spend ninety-five thousand on cameras, you want to say?
Okay, I'm sorry, please don't say what?
Anything about dogs, because I think I'll lose it if I hear about patrol.
Okay, well, um, I will tell you exactly what we need, cameras. Um, in the past year, this is just in the past year, we've had entrance doors torn off hinges, we've had back doors broken, we had windows smashed, we've had furniture stolen from lobbies, we had drugs in the stairways, we've had mailboxes broken into, we've had dogs doing their business in the hallways, we've had laundry rooms used as garbage dumps, we have fire alarms pulled, we have had apartment doors vandalized, we've had residents attacked in lobbies, we've had empty apartments broken into, you tell me why we, we need cameras. Okay. At least we will know who the, who these people are, and we'll be able to identify them. So, there are three things, please, let me speak, there are three things that can be done. Number one, the most simple thing, depending on the violation, we have instituted, as you well know, a violations committee, and these people will be fined, and whatever, hold on, let me finish, please, all right? They will be fined, and their privileges will be withdrawn. If it is a criminal act, then they will face criminal charges, that's as simple as that. But let me tell you what cameras can do. We're not so concerned about catching them, as much as cameras will act as a very great deterrent. You will no longer see, when people know they are on camera, you think that they will tear a door off their hinges? Do you think that they will dump the... I don't know, but I got a email showing what happened in the Heidelberg last weekend, when I'm telling you garbage piled six feet by six feet, all right? The unfortunate thing is, is that there are some residents in our village that do not share our life values, nor our rules and regulations. And the only way to control them is to identify them. And if you can't identify them, at least make them aware that they're being watched. It doesn't matter, the thing is, is that we will catch them, that's the bottom line, yes, ma'am? I'm sorry, say, say again? Uh, there are going to be, the, the cameras are basically standard security cameras, yes, you can certainly do things that need to be done, but you need to walk up to the camera to vandalize it, and it's very simple. If you were gonna vandalize, they're gonna take your picture before you vandalize it, okay? I'm sorry? Okay, you know what, I'm gonna give you some math, let me give you some math, please, let me give you some math, uh, because math doesn't lie. Let me just give you some comparisons, okay? There are certain things in the village that must be done, we understand that, we have no choice, the pool, the pump room, uh, the building renovations, these are mandatory items. But I have asked you, I came into the office this, this, uh, today, and sat down with Jason, and with Chad, and we worked out some numbers. I said, "Guys, you know what you're gonna do? Remove all the non-mandatory items from the project list, remove them, completely, and show me the difference in the monthly payments per unit." And I am going to use in the one-bedroom large, and the reason for that I'm using that is, is it's the largest number of units we have, three hundred and forty-nine. If we go with the existing, um, assessment, that unit will pay forty-five dollars a month for the next thirty-six months, all right? If we include all the non-monetary, I'm talking about the cameras, the speed humps, the security, whatever, the golf carts, do you know that that unit will pay forty dollars? Forty dollars per month? So are you gonna tell me that for five bucks a month, for the next thirty-six months, it's gonna make a difference? It's gonna make a difference, the five dollars is not only gonna give you the cameras, the renovations, the speed humps, the golf carts that we need, all the project lists, five dollars a month extra, that's the bottom line. So it's not as if we sat around using a Ouija board and a crystal ball, we are seriously decent businessmen that looked at all the probabilities and came up with these numbers. Sad, yes, hurtful, yes, is it gonna push some of us over the edge? Yes. However, again, I will say, five bucks, and you'll have cameras, you'll be able to walk the streets safely, without speeders, you know, I said to Jason, I wa, I stayed awake all week, all weekend thinking about this, and I said, "I can be a stand-up comedian." And let me tell you the joke I came up with. I was walking from my unit, I lived in Bordeaux, and I walk every morning around eight-thirty, quarter to nine to the office, and, uh, as I was walking, uh, this, this automobile came tearing across in front of the Yorkshire, and at the end of the Yorkshire, um, blew right through the stop sign, and, uh, almost ran me over, and I, I ran after the guy, and I stopped him, and I said, "What the hell are you doing?" I said, "You're driving too fast, you blew through the stop sign, you almost killed me." And the guy rolled down his window, and he said, "Jeez, I'm sorry, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I didn't see you, I was on my cellphone." And you know what, that's the truth, that's the truth. The truth is, we need to bring not only security to the village, we also need to bring safety to the village, we also need peace of mind, we also need to know that our real estate value maintains its worth, and that we have a standard of life that we can be at least proud of, yes?
Charlie, about the cameras?
Yes.
I had an incident about a year ago, where a bullet hole went through my windshield.
Right.
Are any of those cameras going to be...
Okay, uh, the one camera that we're insisting upon is a camera that's gonna be, it's not, it's not gonna cover the entire parking lot, that's for sure, but there will be a camera pointing out, that has a fish-eye effect, all right? So it'll give us a little bit of coverage in front, it's not gonna be a hundred percent Maryland, I'm sorry, I mean, I would love to have cameras mounted on our, you know, on posts, but at some point in time, we need to draw a line, yes, sir?
Given the fact that we have to pay this in order to save the village, what about, is there going to be anything done for people who are in a position where they cannot come up with this large amount of money for the four months on the bailout? Is there anything that can be done to help them meet their obligations to the village?
Okay, I'm not gonna handle that, I'm gonna ask Jason, uh, to, to really speak about that, okay?
Okay. Okay, um, does, I'll, 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 I'll ask you a forefollow-up. Who, who answers this? Okay, very good. Unfortunately, the situation that we're in requires the money. If I was to stand up here and tell you we can make arrangements, we wouldn't really have to do this, it's a sad fact, it's something that I have a chill going down my spine right now, having to say, because I know how difficult that is, and it's difficult for me to say. But the reality is, we need the money, and I can't stand up here and say that we, we can make arrangements for everybody, we just can't do it. Unfortunately, it's just, it's, we, it can't be done, and it's not me, it's not the board, it's the bills that dictate that. I hope, I, I know sadly, I hope that answers your question, yes.
I'd like to give you a comparison, just on that particular situation. If we choose the other route, going bankrupt, um, one of the things that will happen is that a receiver will be put in place of the board, and his job would be to fund all the things that have to be funded right now, so nobody will be given X number of months to pay whatever a special assessment will be issued. Let's say it's, let's say it'll be twelve hundred dollars, you're not gonna be given two, or four, or six, or a year to pay it, you're gonna have to come up with twelve hundred dollars right now, no ifs, ands, or buts. And plus, plus, that will be, at, at his discussion, plus, any, any special assessment that a receiver puts in, or, uh, approximately thirty percent is added for his fee. So a whole chunk of money is going to be assessed to everybody right now, that he's gonna get, or whoever it is, uh, and the village doesn't get it. So no matter how difficult the situation is with this special assessment, it'll only be worse if we go bankrupt, I just wanted to put that out there as a comparison.
I wanna, I wanna answer, I wanna, just piggyback on something Marvin just said, because it is very important, because I did hear a comment from the back, personal bankruptcy is nothing to do, and is nothing like a condominium declaring bankruptcy. What he's talking about with that thirty percent, or whatever that number is, it's approximate, when the receiver comes in, whatever shortfall there is, they have to keep the lights on, they have to keep this on, they have to keep that on, so they will assess you for that, because it's not coming out of the state's pocket, and they won't give you time to pay it, so that's what he's referring to, okay?
What magic do they have?
It's not that they have magic, but, but that's what they do, what else are they gonna do? They're not gonna pay it, they're gonna shut the lights off, well, they'll have to shut the lights off, but their job as a receiver is not to shut the lights off, just like the job of our board here, is not to shut the lights off. Yeah, just, I, I had one over here first, yes?
Um, two things, I heard you say something about Verizon Wireless, what do we pay Verizon Wireless for?
We have, we have staff members we need to keep in touch with. And so we, so we, yeah, and they, and it was, uh, we would cut that out, we cut out that amount of money by decreasing the number of people we gave cellphones to.
And the next question, the nineteen percent of people that we are covering, when they are able to give the money back, what's gonna hap, what are you guys gonna do with that money?
Okay.
Are you gonna give it back to us, are you gonna put it in a reserve, what are you gonna do?
It actually states it, uh, in the letter that was sent out to you, what have, which is, which stipulates that the people who are not, who are classified as non-payers, should they pay, should we get money for it. That money will be placed in very specific... That money will be placed in very specific reserve funds for anything that happens in the future so that you don't have to be special assessed. That will be good money for you to have. It states in the letter that was mailed out to you, be advised that a pooled, reserved fund will be created. It will accrue monies received from delinquency collections, possible future contract savings if we're able to save money on any of the contracts further that we're working on, any overages due to early Part II payoffs. At the end of the finance period, any accrued funds will be placed in an interest-bearing account accessible only by the signatures of majority of the Board of Directors. So the money cannot come out of the bank to go to anything unless the majority of the board, not just two signatures, a majority of the board gives the authority for whatever the project is. Did I answer your question? Thank you, yes?
I have a question. You see the number of people here and the number of people that live in the village. What if half of these people don't pay this assessment? Are we still going to go bankrupt?
If half the people...
Of the community do not pay this thing by October, November, December, and January, and half the community does, are we still going to go bankrupt?
We have, right now, 19% delinquents.
I'm not talking about that.
Now, I'm getting to you. Now, the simple answer to your question is if half the people that are remaining, or total, meaning increasing it by 20%?
No, I mean, I mean, half the village won't pay that if it's in October, November, December, and January.
I will tell you right now what it will do. It will delay the inevitable. We will have money coming in so that we can survive barely, right? Because money will be coming in.
And then what happens to the people that paid into it if we go bankrupt? Because half the community doesn't pay, what happens to the money that the people paid that did that?
Judy, you know, that is a very good question. And the sad truth is, if half our residents do not pay, we are bankrupt. That's the bottom line. Whether it happens in October, or the end, I'm sorry, the end of September, or the end of October, or the end of November, the bottom line is, is that if you can't pay your bills, you go bankrupt.
But what happens to the half that does pay? Have they been screwed?
They're going to, Judy, it's not will they get screwed. Everybody will be screwed. That's the bottom line, okay? I mean, how honest can I be? Yes, Rosario? Please, quiet, please, please, quiet. Yes, I'll come to you, Lisa, go ahead.
80% of the non-delinquents pay the special assessment and save the village. What about next year, are you going to be okay? Or are we going to be again?
Okay, thank you for that question. In fact, it's a very, it's a very important question.
Could you repeat it?
In fact, this is the question that came across. If we do what we're doing now, what does 213 look like? Will we need to raise more money? And the honest, honest answer is, in fact, Jason and I discussed this for about two hours today. And the bottom line is, we don't know. It really depends whether or not we can collect our special assessment going forward. And if the majority of our owners come up and do their responsibility, then it is going to be something that the budget will reflect. Right now, I can't honestly say whether there is going to be an increase. If there is an increase, what amount that increases, I have no idea, Rosario.
I'm not asking about increase, I'm asking about having, you know, not being in the red.
We don't know yet. I haven't done, we haven't sat down and done the budget. We haven't. Right, but this...
What's the question?
Her question was, what happens going forward? After this assessment comes through, will we have enough money to run the village on a month-to-month basis? And my answer was, I don't know. And the reason I don't know is because we haven't sat down and done the budget projections for 2013 because we don't know how much money we're going to raise. So until we know how much money we're going to raise, I can't give you a truthful answer. Yes, Lisa? I will repeat your question.
And looking at the lineups in the package lounge, I see at least three items that are not mandatory. The cameras at $94,000, the sign out...
Lisa, I just covered that. I covered that, go ahead.
There's a question in this. $94,000 in cameras, $15,000 in the sign out front, Ficus plant stands on. I think it's $5,000 or $6,000. Combined amount, $115,000. Now, we are facing bankruptcy, and yet, wait, wait, wait. Question's not here yet.
Well, take your time, but hurry up.
I'm hitting there. The more you interrupt, the more I will take long. It's bad enough that we're facing bankruptcy without adding stuff, and I would rather spend $115,000 on the Nottingham roof that has to be done than a camera, Ficus plant, and a sign at $115,000.
Okay, I answered that and I said that basically, that's going to cost us between $3 and $5 a month extra to have that. $3 to $5 a month. That's the bottom line, okay? Yes, sir, Marvin, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to put another perspective on that camera situation. I'm going to put the speed humps and the camera together. The camera is about, round number is $95,000, the speed humps are about $15,000. $110,000. That $110,000 is going to cost me personally approximately $140. That's my portion of that. Now, if it costs me $140 to create a safer, more secure environment for whatever time I have left here in the village, as far as I'm concerned, $140 is money well spent. Because I personally believe that a properly-run surveillance camera system will lead to less crap going on, less people dumping garbage, basically catching people who are violating. And as far as the speed humps are concerned, I believe that the properly-placed speed humps are going to further slow people down. So I don't, personally, I don't mind paying $140 for feeling more secure and for having cars run more slowly.
That's divided by 36 months also. The 140 you're talking total.
Yeah.
Can I just clarify, Nottingham roof included in this budget that we're discussing tonight? Because I do believe that's the point Lisa made. We have, what was it, $200, some exorbitant amount of money to repair this roof.
Yes.
That's another $200,000. Well, we have $115,000 worth of non-mandatory expenses that were put towards that roof that is not included in this assessment, which is going to hit us eventually. And that's what she's saying. She's not talking about the need or not having the need. It's that now we have another huge expense on top of all the other expenses.
That's correct. And, okay, so this is, okay, so I understand what you're saying now. So... The answer to your question is, this just came up. It just popped up. That's the answer, okay? So what I can tell you, what I can tell you is that through the collection process, through the collection process, we will be able, we should be able to fund that coming up. Now, again, this roof, we don't have the bids on yet. We were just told about it, just now. This has already been taken care of. We had already sent this out.
Really isn't good enough. We need to know, we need assurances that what is this board and this management company doing for sure that we're not in this predicament other than owners not being places during the step up, what steps are going to be taken to give us assurances that we're not going to be in this position again at the end of next year?
All right, I think I answered the question when Kurt answered. Why are we raising $813,000 deficit for 2012? When in fact, we don't need that entire dollars to run the village until the end of January? We, and I'll be honest with you, Jason and I, and Francis and Marvin had the discussion. And the final conclusion was, we know that before the end of the year, we were going to have some surprises based on the 40-year certification review. And the 40% certification review brought into focus to us on Friday that the Nottingham roof needed to be repaired. So approximately, the money that we do not need to actually run the village between now and the end of the year that we're going to collect, that money is going to be used to repair the Nottingham roof, is going to replace these two air conditioners, and whatever else befalls us before the end of the year. Because unfortunately, we do live in a community that's 38 and a half years old and has been neglected, believe it or not, has been neglected for the last few years. We look pretty, but open us up, we're pretty rotten. Yes, Marcy?
What happened with the Florida Carolina, like, what were they doing?
I can't answer that, Marcy, I will in a minute, but I want to, because it's nothing to do with what we're discussing.
It's not going to be assessed, is there something?
No.
No, no, it's nothing. Yes, Colette?
Just make a point, too, that show up for regular board meetings, everybody, because we don't get this many people at our regular board meetings.
Yeah, you know, Colette...
And that answers your question. How do you know what we're going to do? We all sit up there, we all discuss it, we go over it, the numbers are out there, and then we vote on it. So you know what we do.
You know...
We have it once a month, Monday, third Monday of every month, at 7 o'clock. Show up. You, you know, learn, ask us questions, you know, participate. This is your community. It isn't just us nine people up there. We represent you, and if you don't show up on a monthly basis, what does that tell us? Tells me you don't care. Now everybody cares. So, you know, get involved, there's committees, there's all sorts of things going on that we need help with, and no one is around.
And by the way, there is an election coming up, and if you want, step up...
And run.
And put your name on the ballots, and we'll be very happy to see you. And by the way, everything we're discussing here in our last board meeting, we've spent almost an hour discussing, almost an hour. This is not something that was hidden from the residents. We've been chewing on this for months. There are some faces here that I've been talking about this for months. Sidney, have we not talked about this for months?
Months and months.
Months and months and months, all right? We have, we have in the audience here, I don't want to point them out, but we have individuals that this assessment is going to hurt real bad. Real bad. Multi-unit owners that will cost them $60,000, $70,000, and $80,000. All right? No matter, right or wrong, it's still going to cost them money. It's going to cost me personally $10,000. Jerry Miro is going to cost a few thousand dollars, all right? So we didn't sit down and say, hey, Marvin, can we make some money here? We didn't do that. It was a crucial, it was hard on us because we knew the bottom line was, is that we were going to push some of you over the edge. And let me tell you something. It is not a good feeling for anybody when we know that. Okay, yes, ma'am?
I don't mind paying the assessment.
Good, I'm glad. Come to the office tomorrow with your checkbook, please.
Well, here's the thing, though, if you had figured this out months and months ago, it would have been nicer to have one of us. That's...
No, I'll tell you, I'll tell you why that was not realistic.
I don't come to the meetings anymore, Colette, because I used to? And every time I go to a board meeting...
Darling, no, 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 no. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Stop, 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 stop. Please stop, please, please stop, please stop. Misinformation.
And I'm getting talked over now.
Misinformation. We did not have the figures. We knew in our hearts, looking at what was coming in and what was going out, that we were running a deficit. But we had no idea whether it was going to be $2 or $200,000. We had no idea, none. It was only when AMG came on board in April, and they have taken weeks and weeks and weeks of forensic auditing to come up with the numbers that we have today.
I agree, I, I knew there should have been...
Yes, sir, thank you. Oh, sure. Look, let's make one thing plain. The last time this association had an assessment maintenance increase was seven years ago. Okay? And if we had just given ourselves a 5% to 7% increase each year that was easily absorbable, we wouldn't be standing here today. And we would still have $2.5 million in our insurance fund, all right? But that's not the reality. The reality is, we did not. The reality is, we've gone through our $2.5 million, and if you people don't support this assessment, I'll be out of a job. All right? I'll be out of a job, Jason will be out of a job, the board will no longer, no longer be here. And sadly, that's the truth, yes, ma'am, from Trinidad.
Bahamas.
Bahamas? Okay, sorry, close, no, no.
What I want to say first of all is thank you and the board members for making difficult decisions. It's not easy to make easy decisions and tell people, we're not going to raise your maintenance, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do that. That's easy. It's hard to stand up in front of people when you know they're going to be hurt. And if you think, you know, well, I'm not going to pay it, and I'm going to sell, and I'm going to leave, once it passes, you're still responsible for paying that special assessment. It is your bill. So face up to it, grit your teeth, straighten your back, put your feet down, dig deep in your pocket, see what you can do.
Thank you so much for that message. We need, as an association, as a membership of all owners, we need to look forward. What happened in the past happened in the past. Put us all in a deep hole, but let's continue doing this.
Let's make sure it doesn't happen again.
Well, yes, sir, I, hold on. This man has been standing in the back with his hand up with a gorgeous t-shirt, and I want to hear his question.
I've been a resident here for 15 years.
Quiet, please.
If we go into bankruptcy, this place is going to turn into a Section 8 housing project, and we're going to lose whatever we have. I'm under, I owe more than my place has worked by far, but it's going to go, it's going to get even worse. And if anybody that lives here for any amount of time knows, like you said, it's 70 years since we had an assessment, last assessment, I believe, was for Wilma.
Yep.
You know, we live in a community that requires money to run this place. And if we think we're going to get away with not paying an assessment for all these years, we're fooling ourselves. We have to pay this thing.
Yeah, we cannot just stick our head in the sand.
I haven't worked in 15 months, I've been out of work for a year and a half.